Sorry, so does every church mind? Either a dog or a kid. I figured there's not enough time.
You had sent me the other thing you sent me. An interest.
Let me remind everyone, please, silent your cell phones. But pray. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this day and we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and do the business for our city. The best that you see fit. Lord, just be with us tonight as we make the decisions. We've got some tough decisions and Lord, just let everybody leave with an open heart and open mind. It's gonna be a winner and a loser. But Lord, we all got to live in this city. So I just pray that we can all get along together after this meeting. Lord, just give the council this strength to make the right decision. Set the record flat, all council members. Need an approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Mr. Dixon. Second by Mr. Jacob. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? The agenda passes. Need approval of the consent agenda?
I approve.
Have a motion by Mr. Lou.
Second.
Second by Mr. Jacob. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. Uh, moving to public forum, we have, uh, several people signed up for the same, uh, opportunity to speak on the item we have tonight. We will ask that everyone wait until item number three under new business to, uh, come up and state your opinion. Everyone will have an opportunity. We do need to take a vote because we need to change our rules. We generally have a five-minute total for each side. And since this is, uh, we have several people signed up, we're going to request that each side have a spokesperson, which has already been chosen, that will have a five-minute period to address the council. And then each one, anybody else for or against, will have a two-minute time limit to come up and address the council. So I need a motion to change the rules on that. Have a motion by Ms. Scott.
Second.
Second by Mr. Perkins. Any discussion?
I don't disagree with that first question since this is not a public hearing but public comments, is it same rules or what? I don't think public comments ever approve.
The mayor and the council have, are encouraged to receive public comment on any action items, so they have the ability to receive it. So while we have a general public comment section, which is now, uh, our suggestion for flow would be that anyone who wants to comment on this Boulevard Waverly Road closing issue, to hold their public comments until that action item is, which is item number three of the new business. And yes, the mayor and council certainly have the ability to receive public comment on that request.
Okay, there's a motion, you say? All in favor? Any opposed? That passes. So we'll change that rule with this one right here. No one else signed up for public comments on anything else. Uh, item number two, we have a rezonation, eight-thirty Georgia Highway, one-thirty-eight.
This is issue number fifteen dash zero-zero-zero-four-seven. Um, Dafken ACI Incorporated requests a rezonation of property located at eight-thirty Highway one-thirty-eight. Uh, property has thirteen-hundred fifty-nine point five-one feet of road coverage on Highway one-thirty-eight, two-hundred-and-sixty-five-point-two-two feet on Powell Drive, and one-hundred-and-sixty-two-point-one-two feet of road coverage on Reed Street. Property is presently zoned B-three and PRD. The requested zoning classification is B-three. The requested zoning will permit a use that is suitable in view of the use and development of the adjacent or nearby properties. The change in zoning will not adversely affect the existing and adjacent property. Subdivision property does have restricted economic use that's currently zoned. The change in zoning will not cause an excessive or burdensome use of existing streets, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools. The future land use plan indicates property should be commercial slash retail. And the code enforcement staff and the planning zoning commission's recommendation is for approval. And this is just to be clear, just a partial rezonation of the property, the surrounding, the property that surrounds the PRD portion is already B-three. The PRD portion was originally B-three, but just want to return it to that zoning classification. Any questions?
Mr. Kelly, this puts all the, all that land that's in this plan under the same zone?
Yes, sir, that's right.
Any other questions? Thank you. We'll open it up to a public hearing. This property over here.
I'm Dennis Dudley with Brewer Dudley, representing, uh, ACI from CPS Partners.
Okay, if you're coming to public, state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
All right. Dennis Dudley with Brewer Dudley, here representing CPS Partners and ACI. Give me just a second, I'm gonna photograph it up on the screen. Um, if those of you in the front row facing this way want to turn around and take a look, I'll make sure and speak loud enough so you can hear me. Um, the total property, thirty-six acres, is everything that's encompassed, although about around in there. Piece that we're rezoning is right there. Back in two thousand eleven, they rezoned the PRD, the remainder of the property, the entirety of the property was B-three. And they rezoned this piece that PRD, to kind of generate some economic use for the property. Ultimately, it was unsuccessful. And that is the original rezon document. Um, it looks a little different because there's some roads shown in here, but there's access to one-thirty-eight, and there's the piece that we're referring to. It was rezoned at PRD for a senior living center. Uh, as I said earlier, it never, uh, was never constructed, never undertaken. So what we're looking to do is to take that piece right there and return it to B-three, which would make it consistent with the remainder of the property. And given that, there's really, essentially what we're doing is going back to the clock, there's really not a whole lot more to be said. Uh, just taking that one piece there and negating PRD zoning, carrying it back to B-three to make it consistent in the way it was pre-two thousand eleven. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? If anybody speaks against, you'll have a chance to come up. Anybody else in the audience want to speak for the rezoning? Anybody else like to speak against this rezoning? That hearing not a break before council.
I'll move to approve.
Have a motion by Mr. Perkins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mount. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Have a rezonation passes. Item number one, under new business, we have a form for the Historic Preservation Commission.
Yeah, Mayor, a few months ago, we had an opening on the Historic Preservation Commission, and we appointed Mr. James Woodall to fill out the unexpired term of that person that resigned. That term there would expire at the end of this month, and so, uh, I've talked with Mr. Woodall, he's doing a fine job on the commission, and I would recommend and make a motion that he be reappointed for a full term.
Okay, we have a motion to reappoint James Woodall and Mr. Bradley.
Second.
Second by Mr. Perkins. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That passes. Item number two, the second reading of the zoning ordinance code.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance to amend zoning ordinance of City Road, Georgia. The mayor and council of City Road, Georgia hereby are damned as follows. Zoning ordinance of City Road officially adopted on June tenth, two thousand fourteen, effective July one, two thousand fourteen. As thereafter amended, is hereby amended by implementing the text amendments and changes outlined and identified in particular detail of Exhibit A, which such exhibit is incorporated herein by reference. All ordinances or parts ordinances conflicted with or hereby appealed, these text amendments of City Road zoning ordinance shall take effect upon their adoption by the mayor and the council. Exhibit A, City Road zoning ordinance text amendment, amendment one, City Road zoning ordinance of July one, twenty fourteen, amended with the following changes. Uh, one, section six-twenty-point-three, Table seven. Two, section six-twenty-point-three, Table seven. Three, section one-thousand-dash-six-point-one-sub-A-sub-three. Four, section six-ten-point-three, Table six. Five, section six-ten-point-three, Table six. Six, section seven-hundred-point-one, Table eleven. Seven, section seven-hundred-point-one, Table eleven. Eight, section seven-hundred-point-two, Table twelve. Nine, section two-ten-point-twelve. Ten, section seven-hundred-point-one, Table eleven. Eleven, section six-forty-three-point-four-sub-five-to-twelve, section twelve-fifty-point-one. Uh, first reading was on the tenth of March, this constitutes the second reading. Uh, that is the ordinance, Mayor, for the council's benefit, this is our sort of semi-annual cleanup that Mr. Kelly is doing a great job of working on, and so about twice a year we'll be coming back to the issues, continuing to improve the zoning ordinance as we find little issues and make changes and improvements.
Council's had a chance to look at all the changes. Any more questions? Not the motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Mr. Mount.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lou. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes. Item number three is a request from First United Methodist Church, closure of Boulevard. Uh, we will hear comments now. Uh, the first comment will be from Chip Ferguson. Everyone commenting tonight, please, uh, come to the podium, state your names and address, please, to the record.
You have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, my name is Chip Ferguson, my address is about thirty-five St. Alpham. I want to start by thanking you for your service to the community. It's a difficult job, I know, and we especially thank you for the consideration that each of you have given to this issue. Uh, I next want to, uh, say that no one needs to be able to turn off of Highway eleven onto Boulevard. The church members don't need to be able to do that. The people that live in the neighborhood behind the church don't need to be able to do that. And most importantly, the people that simply use it as a cut-through to avoid the traffic signal at Al Kobe, they definitely don't need to be able to do that. And we're not asking, nor could we ask you to close a street like McDaniel, or Broad Street, or Spring Street. Those streets clearly are necessary. Uh, because the church owns both sides of the road from stop sign to stop sign, you're not obligated to maintain that as a, as a public street. It simply serves no purpose other than as a convenience. Now, we think the traffic study that was recently performed by the city actually confirms that the road is not necessary. The vast majority of the traffic on that road is generated by the church, by people going to the day school, by church members attending various church activities all throughout the week. It's only just a few people that, uh, that create the safety concern that we have, and it's a major safety issue for us. We base that safety concern on actual events, and you're gonna hear some from some people later who will tell you about things that they've experienced firsthand, and why they're asking that this road be closed. Now, we're, I want to be clear, we don't blame the residents of the neighborhood behind us for causing these safety issues. We think they're caused by the people that simply use that as a cut-through. And as someone, there's, there's a talk about speeding. I've been hit by a car before, and it doesn't take a whole lot of speed to do some pretty serious injury. I feel like I'm lucky to be standing here today, frankly. And all it would take is a driver going any speed to hit a small child or an elderly person, and it would create devastating consequences. We believe that the Methodist Church is a very important part of this community. Um, it does a lot, I think it attracts people to this community, it provides services to the people who live here. And as we continue to grow, we want to provide as many additional services as we can, we want the school to be, uh, to thrive. And in order to do that, we have to maximize the, our use of our space. And as we use our space on both sides of the road, it's only gonna increase the pedestrian traffic back and forth. So the more people that we have going back and forth, for instance, to the playground we have now, the more likely it is that something that none of us wants to happen will happen. Maybe the church created that situation, but the fact of the matter is, there's nothing wrong with trying to be able to provide new and better services to the people of this community. I just don't want to wait till after there's a tragedy to close a road that we truly don't need anyway. Now, I want to quickly address some issues that have been raised throughout this, uh, circumstance on this topic. One, this, this road would continue to be maintained by the church as a, as an internal service road, no need to move any utilities or anything like that. The church plans to expand its first, uh, its front drive, which will, uh, which will eliminate any concerns about safety vehicles being able to get there. And finally, I know there's been some stated concern that in, uh, going through this process, the church is trying to get something for free. I want to make it very clear that the church is not trying to get something for free. First of all, if you decide to close the road, the next logical step would be to abandon the road because you won't have any use for it, and sell it to the adjoining property owner, which is the church. If that happens, uh, we can certainly pay cash, the market value of, of that road. Secondly, and perhaps more attractive, uh, to the city, is the church is prepared to be able to donate land that would provide a suitable location for a Monroe fire station. That, the, the cost, the value of that land would far exceed the value of a strip of un, of road that's unbuiltable. Um, so to me, as a, as a citizen of Monroe, that's a great deal for, for the city, and you're not giving up anything other than a road that you don't, uh, need anyway. And along those same lines, the, uh, any additional cost that the city, uh, undergoes to, to accomplish the road closure, the church is certainly prepared, uh, to, uh, to defray those costs as well. Um, so again, we thank you for your time on this situation, and we really hope that you will, uh, consider closing this now so that we can avoid, uh, a very unpleasant situation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins.
Terry Sussbe. Good evening. I'm Terry Sussbe, I live at two forty-four Boulevard. And I have some petitions and a letter, they're stacked here separately. I know you may not have a chance to look at them right, but I'd like to come. The petitions are from residents of Boulevard and I think a few, uh, people that signed were from Barrett, which is the street that Boulevard ends into. Uh, and, and part of the reason behind that is that this issue, uh, about closing that section of Boulevard, the one by the church, is affected more than just residents on Boulevard itself. Actually, I was, I was part of saying that affects the folks on Al Kobe too. But, um, the interesting thing, I guess, is December two thousand and six, I stood for city council talking about the same question. And on that, it was an incident, or situation, the council voted unanimously not closing. This has been an ongoing situation, um, with, with the church and residents in particular. I'll just say, my personal stance on it is that I've lived, uh, on Boulevard since nineteen-eighty-eight. I had lived there for a while, I think the city attorney referred to, asked me if I was a ringleader, I'm, I'm not a ringleader by any means. Uh, I am a public servant, and I have been that whole time, for two different agencies now, actually in pu, uh, public safety. And yes, like anyone else, no one in their right mind is gonna be wanting someone to get hurt. The reality though is, and I thi, and I appreciate what the, the city and the city department heads did, I think you did a, a pretty good job of, of reviewing the, the concerns that were voiced in the proposal. And, uh, the study, I know, speed study, uh, that was looked at is that, uh, it's sporadic speeding. Now, the gentleman said it's correct, it doesn't take a lot of speed to hurt someone, seen it, seen it firsthand. But the reality is, uh, any street, Monroe Sub Circle, Athens, anywhere in the country, someone's gonna speed on that street every once in a while. And, and those studies for, that were done not only recently, this part of concern, but I think back in two thousand and six, it's in the report that I saw, uh, from the city department heads. The complaint, it pretty much, in fact, it looked confusing because at first, I first read, it says Waverly Boulevard. I'm not sure everyone's clear. Boulevard runs by the church and then continues on around Parkway. Waverly's a little short street that's right behind the church. The church actually owns property on all, on Boulevard and Waverly. And the big question I've got is, if, if this goes forward and we close, and Boulevard is closed, are we gonna later close, um, Waverly also? And then make Boulevard basically a bull sack? I mean, where does this stop? And, and, you know, yes, I understand the church is in a situation. The subdivision is unique, it's historically significant. Nineteen oh-six, it was designed and put in place, it's one of the first communities in this part of Walton County, in what I'm aware, that had covenants or had restrictions that, uh, that were unheard of for the time. And so, it's unique. Boulevard is, was supposed to be a Boulevard, it was supposed to have been divided. Whether it ever was, I've not seen any pictures or drawings, but that's my understanding of what was supposed to be, that's why it's one of the unique things about it. That's why it's on the National Historical District, because it is unique in the community, as a part of this community, and it includes the whole street, including the part that comes off Highway eleven. The church was, uh, was began in nineteen fifty. So, the rest of the, the street and the, and the subdivision, uh, another one in place, has about forty-something years on the church. But the, the point to make is, the church was landlocked, and this whole thing began in nineteen fifty, when they put the first brick down and made the first foundation move, it was landlocked. And, and it's not gonna improve. Now, they've, they've acquired, one way or the other, purchasing or gifts or whatever, the, the land around, um, on both Waverly and Boulevard. And, and I understand that. But this street in itself and the community that that street serves, now I'm sorry, the characterization of the street as a cut-through is improper. A street gets you from point A to point B, I don't care where you're going in this country or in this world, it will get you there, whether it's Boulevard or not. And, and to characterize it as, to downplay it, I like my living, or at least, once I know my living, interviewing people and doing statement analysis, I know how you make things seem not quite as important. Well, this street's important to the folks that live there, it's part of the community. Your department head for streets said, the recipe didn't go along or didn't support the, the proposal to close the street. There are a lot of reasons for doing that.
Stand your five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, the structure will be moving forward, that anyone wishing to speak either for or against this matter, um, order not necessarily being important, would each be allotted a maximum of two minutes.
Okay, Roger DeBrault.
My name is Roger DeBrault. I live at fifteen twenty-four. Anyhow, my concern is primarily the safety of not only our children, but to put the adults in there, and our handicaps. All of our handicaps are in that area of the church, is across the street, they have to cross the street to get into the church. And we have some who are extremely handicapped, and it's difficult for them to get across. It might take them four or five minutes, actually, to get across. And I myself, I was there at least twice till about this year, when I was in the marked walkway, and had to step back because the person was coming through and wasn't stopping, like it says in the law. That's my concern.
Thank you. Andrea Mountain.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Mountain, I have a residence at two thirty Boulevard, Monroe, Georgia. Uh, my, uh, my family moved to Boulevard seventy years ago in nineteen forty-six. Back then, Monroe First United Methodist Church, Curran Site, was a kudzu field. Today, I am a Monroe taxpayer, and I am glad to have the church as one of my neighbors. I am petitioning you to maintain Boulevard's history, historic and useful connection to Broad Street by keeping the road open. I mean, what the church turned in, I wonder if y'all got one of these in your package, they said they can improve the entrance. I don't think that entrance next improved. It's right pretty, on Broad Street. And also, uh, your traffic study, uh, a council went down, which had a traffic study, and I read in the paper the day that there was a few more cars than they thought. But if, if you got more cars than you thought, you need more roads. You take cars off of one road, they gonna have to go on another road. Traffic in Monroe and any other town, today it's as good as it will ever be. Traffic's not gonna get better, it just gets heavier and heavier. But as far as safety for the kids and all, I don't know of any wreck that's happened on that, I've been there, I've known about the road for seventy years. I don't, the only wreck I know about is, when I was fourteen years old, sixty years ago, I came into Boulevard and had a patch of ice. I had a wreck there. And I, somebody mentioned, somebody, the church mentioned, and my councilman, that we, it's a precedent set that they've closed a street before, Church Street. Well, Church Street is a dead-end street, where they closed it, it affected no houses and no residences. But Boulevard's got twenty-five to twenty-six houses, and it affects a lot of them. But I just ask y'all, you know.
That is time, Mayor.
Well, your department heads had some remarks in the paper this week?
Thank you.
I just wish y'all would go to department heads.
Suzanne.
I'm Suzanne Aldrich, I live at two twenty-four Boulevard. Uh, this, if this closure goes through, I don't want any exit from our end of the street and be through Waverly. I went through there, East of Sunday, and the cars were parked all up and down Al Kobe, on either side of that Waverly. And I had to get out of the lane, lane of traffic before I could see the section to go out and turn, like there was already about a lift of clock. And I just think that's the way it's gonna be a lot of times, if you have to go into that street. And I, I would, I could gesture there with the cars, there were things, a lot of people walking into that church, they made out five rather old houses that they have there. I can't see why they can't tear down some of those houses and build a nice parking lot, that would improve the congestion, that's another alternative to closing that street. There wouldn't be so much congestion if they didn't do that. You got about twenty-five parking places to park perfectly, they're both far, but they're across from the church. And then back then, I noticed a lot of congestion. But if they, if they could have a better parking lot, if they need it, to make this situation much better, and they wouldn't have to close Boulevard to delay it, because I object to that closing. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Goodman.
Thank you. My name's Jennifer Goodman, I live at two-three-three Boulevard. Um, just wanted to say that, um, I am vehemently opposed to the closing. Boulevard is on the historic register, it is a beautiful, just, put in such a quaint little. It is a beautiful, just, such a quaint little street. All of the people that live there have lived there for a long time. When I had some misfortune in my life and almost didn't live on Boulevard, I rented two different houses so I could stay on Boulevard till I was able to buy another one. I feel blessed to be there. I have wonderful neighbors. I just, I think closing the street is a bad thing to do and I just wanted to have my opportunity to say that. And it will affect our quality of life. We live on Boulevard twenty-four seven. We are there every day. Even if you're at the Methodist Church every day, the doors are open. You're not there like that. Thank you for your time. Just think hard about this.
Thank you.
Corey Beth Knoll.
I'm Corey Beth Knoll and my address is 535 Carriage Lane. Thank you for hearing us out on this issue. I want you to imagine something for me. You're a new mom, you're exhausted, you're heading into work after a sleepless night with your child. You're about to drop her off at preschool and you get the trouble loaded. You go across the street, a car comes by narrowly missing the two of you, even though you're in the crosswalk. They come flying back. Unfortunately, that's not just something that is imagined. That is something that happened to my daughter and I when she was a young baby, about three months of age, as I was heading into work at the church one day. And I became a member of the Monroe community in 2007 and shortly started working at the church after that. And though I'm no longer an employee of the church, my husband and daughter and I are still active members. People tend to think that the churches open only on Sundays or that the only people who come into the church or who cross that street are church members or are people who attend church there, but that's not the case. Hundreds of people come through the church doors every day, whether through the preschool, Bible study, individuals looking for assistance, even just kids playing on the playground. People come through our doors every single day. This is not about how it affects the safety for the members of just our church, but our concern is the safety of community members as a whole. There are more times than I can count have witnessed or been a part of a close call like the one I mentioned that happened to my daughter and I. People flying through there, not paying attention. I've seen individuals run up onto the sidewalk. Imagine your child, your grandmother standing on that sidewalk. I've seen drivers speed through, not paying attention, and parents have to yank their kids back because they're so excited to go play on the playground and this driver's not paying attention. And while I understand that there haven't been any accidents yet or any incidents yet, my question is, is do we want to be, if we have a chance to change that, prevent that, do we want to take this opportunity?
That is time, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wes Sarles.
My name's Wes Sarles. I'm at 1632 Gladys Heights Lane. They've already said so much of what I wanted to say. But I am a father of three, two twin boys that are four months old. Now, a four-year-old is about this tall. And I am a strong gentleman, but crossing the street with two things in your hand, two babies and a four-year-old is a challenge. And three weeks ago, on a Wednesday, I was crossing the street. I put one foot on at a car, a black Dodge actually, came through about forty-five miles an hour, give or take one or two, and nearly missed my daughter. And I understand that I've never been in any accidents on that road. I have a smoke detector in my house and I have a security system. I've never had a fire, I've never been broke into. But I have those things to protect me. And that's what this is about, is protection. And I also work at the church. I'm in charge of forty-five youth and we have sixty-five children. We have some of your relatives, we have grandchildren, we have nieces and nephews. Everybody in this room. And our concern is our community's safety. And I know that cut through is a bad word, but today, just today, I want six cars come up 11, see the stoplight, cut through our property and go back out on Coby. That's why we call it a cut through. And I appreciate your research and your time and your effort on this. I know it's an emotional thing. Our concern is for our community, because we do it time for our community. We want to continue to do that. Thank you.
Holly Atkins.
Hi, I'm Holly Atkins. I live at 730 Central Drive. I want to thank you for this opportunity to express my concern and also thank you for your service to our community and our families who are visiting you now. I just want to make two quick points kind of already been made. I feel like I am a church member at First Baptist Methodist Church. I feel like it's, as a mom of three small kids, when you're looking for a church, looking for a preschool, you're looking for facilities, playgrounds, classrooms, those types of things. And our church has great facilities. We're in a great location right here in town. And it's a blessing that our church is growing, that our preschool is growing in that way we want our citizens and our community. But we're not able to fully use all of our facilities. We have an awesome playground, but it's across the street. It has swings, which means jackpot in playground land. But we're not able to use it because it's unsafe. The preschool cannot take those children across the street and back to the playground on Wednesday nights, I help with kids. We're completely unable to use that playground. It's unsafe to try to take children across the street and back, especially when it's nearing dark. I'm not going to stand up here and tell you a near miss story where I snatched my children out of the street. I don't think I could stand up here calmly and tell you that story. But I do know that it is a risk. I do know it's happened to plenty of people. And I don't think that we can stomach it if in the future that does happen, that someone is hit and we had this opportunity today to try to prevent that. And finally, to me, it seems like a decision of safety versus perceived convenience. It seems like it's a really easy, real easy problem to solve to me. Safety should always trump convenience. Thank you.
Wes Bond.
Hello, my name's Wes Bond. I'm a new member of the Monroe community. I haven't moved here three weeks ago. We lived at 417 McDaniels Street. I want to tell you about one incident that I've had. We'd have two dollars, one's twenty-two, one's seven. One of the youngest, one was six last year. We exited off of Highway 11, turned right on the street and then pulled into the left at the rear of the building opposite of the church. My daughter was in the rear right seat. I got out of the driver's seat and went around, let her out. We were one of the only cars in the parking lot and she was excited to go to Wednesday night supper. And as she took a couple of steps, I could not see over the car that we drive. But I had the wear off to grab her by the shoulder. And had I not, she would have, I'm not going to tell you she would have been hit because I don't want to go that far, but a police cruiser was cutting through Boulevard, turned right on to Waverly and then turned left on Alcoa. It is a cut through. Somebody mentioned December 2006. I want to tell you some of the ministries that we've created in the church that attracts people. We have the Feed the Hungry program where we feed approximately a hundred people a month for free. People come into our church, cross that street all the time. We have two new early services, eight-thirty and nine o'clock. It's not uncommon to have an additional one-hundred-and-fifty people at the church on any given Sunday. We have the Healthy Hands Ministries where we give out cash, thousands of dollars each month, to help people pay utility bills if they need to buy a meal, we'll buy groceries. Most important to me is the preschool. We have sixty-five kids at the church on any given weekday during the school year. And I just, I think there's a lot of risk there. The traffic study, I just do not agree with it. Because nowhere did it tell me what the highest speed was. Somebody mentioned earlier forty-five miles an hour.
That is time, Mayor.
Right, yeah. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the city councilman. I'm Dave Rager on the scene of Patrick Monroe First Baptist Church. I've been here after five years. My honor, and my blessing to be here. I live at 1428 Charleston Avenue. When we were shown, I think in mutual, we thought, open door some year, maybe a year beyond this. We never dreamed really that it would come to this point. We never dreamed that the emotions both within the church and within the community would ever come to this point. This was never our intention in any manner, shape or form. Our honest, genuine reason for bringing this up is for the safety and concern of children and women. Some are here tonight, many are not. Would it be moved to church in many ways? If this road was closed, first of all, for the safety of people, yes. In other words, of course. But that was not our reason for doing this, never was. I would just hope in more and more conservative, and I thank God for that, voting districts in the United States of America, I would think that there's still a place where the Church of Jesus Christ, where it's grown, where it's powerful, where it is expanding, would truly be a good thing and not something, not decided to try to help. I appreciate your time. I know more time and effort that you wanted to put into this and I appreciate that and my heart, my thoughts and my prayers are with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Cole.
My name's Jerry Cole. I'm at the 2511 Chocolate Road, Monroe. I'm going to be very short this week here. No matter whether the street is closed or not, that church is going to continue to grow. And when it grows, it's going to create more pedestrian traffic across that street. And I think it's very important that we take care of the safety of the people who's causing that street.
Robert Carter.
My name's Robert Carter. I live at 249 Boulevard. Nobody wants to be known as going against the church. You know, I'm not against the church. I want to see, the church growing is a great thing. When you drive around, when you leave Boulevard, you go to town, you've got First Baptist, you've got First Methodist, you've got Cabernacle. There's a couple of churches at the corner of Wayne and Spring. So, during church time, there's cars everywhere. I see cars over in the woods, they're everywhere. Yeah. So, there's, somebody's going to have to look at the big picture. If we're going to continue to grow at First Methodist, you're going to have to look at a big picture to solve your parking problem. I mentioned this when we were here a few years ago. We're going to have to do a shuttle. You've got the hospital parking lot down there, empty. American Leach Park in a lot of empty. You got that office park, empty on Sunday, probably hold two-hundred cars. The short walk, you go to Walmart, you got to walk to get in the store. The problem is...
Address the council, please.
Their parking, Colorado Boulevard, not in the parking lot, behind the church. They could walk on that sidewalk and not even have to cross that street. When I saw them paving those parking places over by the Henson House, they had created a dangerous situation. The cars are perpendicular to the street and the back of the car is at the edge of the street. When they step out, they can't see if anybody's coming. When people are going down the street, you got to, if I go through there and the cars are there, I'm going about five miles an hour, because like you said, you pull up, your kid jumps out on the passing side and you're not there to hold them and they go running, yeah.
That's time, Mayor. I saw a fit was signed up. Anyone else like to speak for or against?
Pretty solid one. I heard the opening prayer.
Let's take your name and address.
My name is Richard Egan. I live at 204 Boulevard. I also did that 239 Boulevard. Been on that street for some time. These people are like family to me, the church and the people. So, it's a decision that I believe, the opening prayer, would answer, that God would need to be done, because it's an issue on safety and it's any issue on parking. But for the big picture, as you can see, I wasn't that safe in life. So, I know what a tragedy can bring to a family. And if we don't close the street, or if we do close the street, are we willing to live with a tragedy like this with one of your loved ones? That's a question I think we need to ask ourselves. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Come to tell you what.
My name is Karen Knell, excuse me, Karen Salt. I grew up in this town and you look at me and tell I'm old. So, I have seen a lot of changes that have been made. I've been a member of the First Methodist Church since I was ten years old. During the church, and at that time, the church was located on the corner of Highland and North Road. Well, we didn't have a parking lot either. But as our church grew, we had to have more room, we had to have more parking. So, we purchased the property where the church is now. And I would like to say it wasn't a kudzu field, it was a big house that was located in that spot that we bought. So, over the years, that has served our purpose, but now we have grown again. The Sunday that Suzanne Audrey was speaking of was Easter Sunday. We had five-hundred people to come to our church through those pre-services and Sunday schools. And so, they were parked up in that street. And I commented to my husband as we were going away, "We have got to do something about the parking that's terrible like him." Now, if we could get that road closed, we've got the property on the other side, which you know, we need more parking. That could be made into more parking and nobody would have to cross the street, nobody would have to park something down the street and nobody would have to park an old hospital in Boston. So, I'd like for you to really give careful consideration. We're trying to grow, the town needs the church to grow. And at this day in time, with all the things that are going on, I think all the churches need to do everything they can to invite people to come.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Evergon Mindheart. I'm a homeowner at 229 Boulevard. I've lived there since 2007. I moved to here, God has sent it there right now. I still love that property and I won't say that I've lived there permanently in some time. One of the reasons I love that property is because of how safe the road is. I've run, I've by, my son, when I bought that house, he was seven. And one of the reasons I love it is because road, he skateboards up and down that street and I never have to worry about him because cars aren't coming through there. We hardly see cars get by, except for the people who live on that road that's not a cut through and I don't even keep that. But I just, I'm opposed to closing it. It's historic. I wanted to change some things to my house a couple of years ago and Historic Society didn't want me to do that. They never want me to change the windows because of the integrity of the house. And I felt like that was just the windows on a house and this is a road that the subdivision was built around. That seems to have historic significance, you know, to my house. And actually, I have to say, looking back, I'm glad that Historic Society stopped me. They came and they actually taught me about how to fix the only doors and make them work and I'm really thankful for that, looking back. So, sometimes things don't work out, but we're thankful that they did it when we look back on it. I just hope you don't close it, but thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Nelson, no, only, my name's Jay Roll, president of Monroe. When we joined the church about four years ago, perfect example of traffic, Easter Sunday, we had an attendance of about three-hundred-and-fifty people. This Easter, we had eleven-hundred people at the church. So, your traffic study's probably a little skewed. Everybody that I keep hearing are respected residents of Boulevard and they have a right to, you know, they're taxpayers as well, to speak their opinions. And they keep talking about it's a prevention of change. Monroe is growing. We brought our company here because of growth. We're trying to grow the community. Traffic on 11 is getting worse on a daily basis. And in order to control the traffic, it needs to have safety lights. That's where you're going at. You need to go through an intersection that's regulated by a traffic light. When your traffic is that much, you're using it, everybody's been saying it's a cut through. It's exactly what it becomes, it's a cut through. You're avoiding that light. The road serves no purpose to the residents that reside on that street. You're traveling up, you continue on Waverly, take a right, you go out and control the traffic intersection. And I mean, it's as obvious as can be. About safety, that is safety. It's going to prevent traffic accidents from occurring. It's gonna prevent traffic accidents from occurring at that intersection. Thank you.
Okay, so I think you have about thirty seconds left. I give you about thirty more seconds.
Okay, I, I go to First Baptist Church. We have to cross streets every day. I cross Wayne Street every time I go to church. It's much busier than Boulevard is. And I'm seventy-eight years old, by the way. And one more thing, I can't understand why, no matter whether Boulevard is open or not, they have a parking lot over there and it's like the Henson House over there area, they can still cross the street. And it's not as big as it's Wayne and McDaniel, because practice has...
Anyone else? Okay, we will close, we have a little comments. I just want to thank everyone y'all that came out tonight, got interest in this. Like I said, there's gonna be a winner, there's gonna be a loser. Appreciate staff, appreciate partners, is everything y'all've done, all the information you've got to all the council members, give them a chance to make the best decision they can. Now we will bring it forward to council. At this point in time, whoever makes the motion, whoever makes the second, we, we need a show of hands on voting. For this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, but, uh, before making the motion, I'd just like to make just a few comments that lead up as preparatory, I guess, to the motion. And I'm, like you, I want to thank everybody that's here tonight. I, I think over the last three to four weeks, I've probably had the occasion to talk to each of the people that are here tonight. Uh, there have been several phone calls and I, I appreciate them all and I appreciate the people. I walked Boulevard and talked to many of you, you know, during that period of time. I have really wrestled with this decision over the, over the past month and, and, and have gone maybe from one side to the other a little bit because I understand both sides very well. I, I understand particularly the historic nature of Boulevard and the creation of that neighborhood as the first subdivision of Monroe with Covenants and, and the history that goes behind it. At the same time, I understand the sixty-five year history of the Methodist Church at its location. So, you know, there's history on both sides of this and, and I saw, but I appreciate, I appreciate the historical part. From the, from the church's perspective, I understand the concerns about safety. As some other people have alluded to, I think part of the safety issues have been brought about by some actions of the church in the past. But that's in the past and I don't think we can reverse mistakes that were necessarily made at some point in the past. But some of those are church things. Uh, one of the people alluded to the parking spaces, you know, turning perpendicular right beside the church. I too agree that those parking spaces are probably not appropriate because it does lead to possibility of some accidents. I, I have over the last three weeks gone to the church and gone to Boulevard and, and parked in some of those spaces as well as the parking lot behind the church in order to just observe traffic and what was going on. Through all of this and through observing the traffic and through talking with many of you and other people throughout the city, I think what, you know, what it comes down to me is that we've got to look at what's going on in the past from a historical perspective. We have to look at what's going on today from any safety issues, but even beyond that, we have to look to the future. And I think that, you know, justice, this neighborhood has been so important to the city of Monroe. The church plays a major role in the city's future and the city's growth and that of downtown Monroe. And because of that, and because of, I guess, wrestling with all this, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we agree with the church and close Boulevard at Broad Street, uh, and ma- and make that closure effective as soon as possible and then follow that by taking all the appropriate steps that were necessary and applicable steps to look toward abandonment of the road, uh, with compensation, uh, due to the city at that point in time. That is my motion.
We have a motion on, Mr. Bradley. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, by Mr. Purvis.
Point of order, Mayor, if we may. If I could request the council member to modify their motion, you can certainly provide direction that we begin the process or look to the process of road abandonment. But if I can, Mr. Bradley, to engage, I just want to be careful what our motion is. So we're here tonight on the issue of whether or not to close the entrance of Waverly Boulevard at the intersection with State Route, Highway eleven, uh, Broad Street. Uh, if I could just ask the council member to consider amending their motion to remove the language about abandonment so that your motion, uh, would be appropriate and legal as the issue before us tonight noticed up is for the closure of the entrance. There is before this council tonight no issue of abandonment of that right of way of Waverly Boulevard because we would need to follow appropriate state law procedures to initiate that. We certainly can in the immediate aftermath of this first motion, meaning at the next and the next council as, as is proper, but I would caution the council to not entertain any motion that contemplates this issue of abandonment at this time.
I appreciate your concerns. I do want to have something in the motion that says we will move toward the process, that we won't close the street and just leave it closed and belong to the city. That we will move to, I understand the process has got to take place, and I use the term process, I think, in my original motion, because I think we have to begin the process of looking at abandonment. And it mean, I'm not motioning says we're going to abandon it, I didn't prepare any motion. I want to get, we'll move toward that, that we'll move toward the process and, and do whatever the state requires and, and other code requires us to do at that point in time, including public hearings, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you, councilman.
Motion still stands and the second still stands. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
All those in favor, please do so by raising your right hand. Mr. Richardson, Mr. Bradley, Mr. Malcolm, Mr. Little, and Mr. Purvis. All those in here, please raise your right hand. Scott, Mr. Dixon, Mr. Dracott. Passes on five, three, four. Thank you very much. Item number four is approval of Walton County School SRO Program three. Chief.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Council, the contract remains the same as it has for the last several years. There was a, uh, increase in the amount of money that will be received to provide those services for the schools.
But I ask everyone not to talk, we are still conducting business here, Chief. Thank you. Sorry, Chief.
So, uh, I guess we got a pay raise. That's, that's all the changes, so I would ask that you, uh, sign the contract, uh, after our attorneys look at and say it's good to go and, uh, we certainly appreciate the school system being a supporter of us and we're glad to be a supporter of the school system.
We reviewed the contract as an order, Mayor.
Okay. I need a motion on the SRO program. So move. Motion by Mr. Richardson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Malcolm. Any discussion? Here you go, all in favor? Any opposed? That passes. Item number five is a resolution for the electric cities of Georgia Participate Contract Amendment. Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution to City Monroe approving amendment number one of the intergovernmental participative contract among all participants respecting participation in electric cities of Georgia Inc. and for other purposes, whereas all fifty-two subdivisions or other governmental bodies owning or operating electric distribution systems in the state of Georgia, including the City of Monroe, calls to be formed in the electric cities of Georgia Inc. as successors to GMA's Electric Section on September two, nineteen ninety-two, in order to facilitate increased joint action among the participants. And whereas ECG is a Georgia nonprofit corporation under the Georgia Nonprofit Code, insubtlety of participants under section one fifteen of the Internal Revenue Code and operates on a nonprofit basis on behalf of each of participants, having no purpose other than benefit of participants directly or through economies of scale and all of its annual costs and benefits are shared and allocated among participants. And whereas fifty-two participants entered into an intergovernmental participative contract dated as of February one, twenty thirteen, setting forth the terms of certain services to be provided by ECG on each of their behalf. And whereas participants desired certain amendments to be made to the contract respecting distribution engineering and analytical services and the contract pursuant to section four oh three thereof, may be amended with written approval of seventy-five percent of participants and would be affected by such amendment using the way to vote methodology set forth in subsection. Now therefore, it is all a government body of participants in meeting duly assembled and is hereby resolved by authority thereof as follows. Section one, participant hereby approves each of the amendments provided for by that certain draft amendment number one, contract among participants in the substantial form attached here too is exhibit A. And two, approves and authorizes the execution and delivery of the amendment. Such amendment shall be executed by the mayor Greg Combs and attested to by appropriate officer of the participant and shall have participants' seal of fix there too and shall be delivered to ECG on behalf of the other participants. Execution of the amendment as authorized herein shall be conclusive evidence of participants' approval, section two. Participant hereby offers if you authorize official way to see the district or either way to take any further actions and execute and deliver any and all other documents necessary to carry out purposes of resolution. Section three, our resolutions, partial resolutions in conflict here with are hereby repealed. That is the resolution for this fourteenth day of April, Mayor.
Thank you. We will need a motion on this resolution.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Little.
Second.
Second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion? Here you go, all in favor? Any opposed? That passes. Item number six is the MEAG bond validation. Brian, you want to just kind of give us a...
Yes, sir.
...overview on that.
It's bond validation. The bonds are being issued, uh, through the DLE. We've got a very favorable rate, which saves us a tremendous amount of money compared to going to the open market. Uh, basically this is just, uh, the attorneys need to say grace over the, uh, validation, make sure it's fine. We just wanted to let y'all know this was going on and that that money is being borrowed as we speak, as soon as you get it validated, as soon as we get all the bonds validated.
And I want to say that MEAG is one of the few power institutions that has gotten upgraded on their rating system. Everybody else, because of this, um, nuclear, the plant five, three, and four, they have an unfavorable bond rating, so my hat's off to MEAG and the...
Yes, our, our mix, our fuel mix has helped us out a lot with coal being, um, it looks like it's gonna be very heavily regulated over the next few years. We are fifty-four percent nuclear now, uh, with a good bit of hydro and natural gas. We're down to thirty, thirty-two percent coal. By two thousand and thirty, we will be down to about ten, fifteen percent coal. So it's one of the reasons we've got a, a more favorable, uh, rate.
The bond validation documents are in order, Mayor.
All right, bond validation, okay, so we need a motion to let, allow me to sign the bond validation.
So move.
Second by Mr. Little, second by Mr. Scott. Any other questions? Here you go, all in favor? Any opposed? That passes. That will conclude our regular meeting. I need a motion to go into executive session.
So move.
Motion, the second, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
We'll take a five-minute break and then we'll go into executive session. Thank you.